Evening, lady and gentleman. And we are pleased as the mayor of the city of Vator to call this officially scheduled city council meeting to order at 6:35 PM. And welcome all who are in attendance tonight. We'll proceed with our roll call.
Okay. Andy Wilson.
Present.
Mark Fenison.
I was informed minutes ago by Mr. Wilson that Mark called him and to inform us that he had an unexpected family matter that he needed to take care of.
Okay. Let's see. Joe Schei.
Present.
Kevin Flynn.
Present.
And Justin Olson.
Present.
And Mayor Smith.
Also present. So we still have time, so we can officially proceed with the items on our agenda. The first of which, of course, is in the spirit of the American tradition, we will begin this council meeting with a prayer, which tonight will be offered by a council member, Justin Olson. So we invite the public to run with us.
Okay, let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just come before you tonight, God. We're seeking your wisdom, God, God, your direction in your council in this meeting tonight, oh Lord. And I just pray, God, for the peace and prosperity, God of the city, God, and of this nation. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. We'll now invite all present to please arise for the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Flynn, would you do the honors for us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dive right into the mayor's report. I first wanted to assure the council members that inasmuch as you authorized the community to proceed with the Burlington Northern grant application, we've responded by submitting it officially to Burlington Northern. And has not, was not changed from the last time that you saw it. So we haven't gotten any feedback, of course, from it yet, but we anticipate that we'll be hearing something within a month or so. So we'll keep you advised. Second item, I wanted to mention to you that I had contacted and spoken with the coordinator, if that's her title, of the event, Judy Costello, who was present with us. And I'm quite excited about the prospects of a truly outstanding Fourth of July celebration. Outstanding especially in the sense that it's genuinely a grassroots, community-driven event that exists primarily on the enthusiasm and financing support of the residents of the community. So, and I'm eagerly awaiting my minor role in it, which will, of course, be the water on feed, and would invite all present to come and enjoy and participate with your family members in that event. I noted that, however, maybe it would be appropriate, coordinator, did you want to say something?
I did. I came tonight to do an update.
You've signed up for the public comment. Okay, then I will hold off on that. The last item that I felt that you should be aware of is that we were approached by one of the individuals responsible for the break-in of the jail, or at least the attempted break-in, and vandalism at the Assembly of God Church, and they expressed remorse on some what regarding their role in that, and asked if the city would consider allowing them to participate in community service as a way to atone for the damages done. I've spoken to Pastor Durham about it and indicated what had happened. He hasn't, they haven't approached the church yet. Two young people have, but the main perpetrator hasn't yet. But Pastor Durham felt like if we could get some service toward the church, that would be good. Well, I'm meeting tomorrow morning at 10 here with that individual. We won't make it a matter of public record, but I'll be meeting with him and we'll begin to orchestrate that effort, both for the city and for the church. Yes.
What about them restitution for paying for the flag and repairing the job, the jail dog? Also, the floodlights that they tore down for the flag that I paid for?
That's a good question. I've got to insert here that the city is, it's still under judicial processes, and I have a feeling that the court system will probably impose that sort of financial penalty. The city's role isn't to impose a penalty. Ours is to serve as a means whereby they can provide restitution, but not in a financial way. That's my response to that. But if the courts don't do something like that, then maybe we could make that suggestion to you or to the individual. Does that make sense? Okay. So I'll keep you advised. Oh, and we've spoken with our Public Works employee who's eager for the opportunity.
Oh, my!
Yes, and he hopes that he can have some rehabilitative influence on the office.
He's experienced at that.
So with that, there are a number of other things, irons in the fire, but rather than take our time, I will keep you advised by other channels. So let's proceed with the official approval of our agenda, which is the next item in business. So wait council action.
Jill, would this be the right time to make the modifications to the agenda, since the voucher amount has changed? Should we change?
Oh, no, you don't have to change it. You change that when you do voucher approval.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to purr the agenda without changes. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded, by Mr. Olson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carried. Minutes approval for our last council meeting, June 12.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes, the city council, June 12, 2014.
Okay, Mr. Wilson submitted the motion as stated regarding the minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded, by Mr. Flynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Now we're down to voucher approval.
Let me give you the corrected amount. In my total, I forgot to include something, so the corrected amount, the first half of June amount is correct. The end of June 2014 should read $31,977.24, and it should be bringing the total for June to $57,009.50.
Okay. All right.
And that's the amount you'll see on the voucher.
Yes, right, but what they reviewed is accurate.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the first half of June 2014 for $25,032.26. The end of June 2014 for $31,977.24. Total for June 2014, $57,009.50.
Okay, Mr. Flynn has presented to you a motion as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Schei. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Excellent. Now we're down to public comment.
Use the web, Mr. Judy.
Okay. Approach the platform.
It's never just, Judy. No, it's never just. Judy Costello, 709 A Street, there. Want to update you on Fourth of July, it's exactly a week away. We, I know, it just flies by when we're having fun. Everything has come together as we anticipated this year. The parade starts at four o'clock. We will need as many lawnmowers as possible, so any of you who have mowers and have not volunteered to bring your mower with, if decorated, please do so. We're hoping to have 20 to 25 this year. And little Linda Smith is in charge of the parade, but feel free to contact me. And I will be Sunday and Monday going door to door. Anybody that's got a riding mower is going to get a visit from me.
Beware.
Beware. The band starts at five. It's called The Randy Band, fabulous band that will be playing for four hours. We have a hop shop coming, which is Jennifer with her blowups for the kids. VCL will be there selling. Masons will be there with their trailer, with their hot dogs and their hamburgers. And the Parkhead, I understand, is going to do a silent auction or raffle of some sort to try to raise some money also that day. And then I had a phone call last night from one lady who wants to be a vendor and bring flowers. She was here at May Day evidently, so I told her that we'll be able to fit her in somewhere. And then Mayor Ken will be doing his watermelon feed and spitting contest.
Yes, and other contests.
And other contests. I know that Reggie's wife, Linda, will also have a whole bunch of games for the kids to do, and she'll be announcing that. And what I'm probably most excited about is the young eight-year-old that is going to be singing the National Anthem for us. We've gone to a lot of trouble to, not a lot of trouble, but it was a pleasure to build her a little platform all decorated in red, white, and blue, because she's just a little bit squeak. And she'll be up there, and we will have some older children holding some Roman candles that will be going off while she sings with her microphone.
What time will that be?
This is going to be at dusk just before we start the fireworks. She will be the beginning of the fireworks, and we'll have her somewhere over by the post office with a remote microphone this year, so she'll be able to do that. But I'm really excited about that, because she's such a sweet young lady, and she's Vator. So cleanup crew, my family, they're all coming from Portland and staying over, so I've got the grandkids, and Brian and his wife will be here, so we've got cleanup crew on board.
We'll be there.
And you'll be there also. Okay.
What time does that start?
When we get up and roll. When we get up and roll. I don't know, Ken.
Well, we'll decide.
We can discuss that sometime. And other than that, everything's good. And I would like to make one comment about the functions that I've been participating in, in Vator, May Day, the Citywide Yard Sale, and this Fourth of July event. Steven has been so gracious to be 100% on board with letting everybody know, so thank you.
Absolutely. We should, I appreciate that.
Yes, absolutely wonderful. For all of you that don't have any plans for tomorrow and Saturday, when Egg Day is tomorrow, come and participate. Big deal. And let's see, one more thing. Did we offend somebody? I have never been here, just Julie and Steve and I.
Once in a while.
Oh, okay.
It's been like this before.
We need to start recruiting.
Keep the TV.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I don't know if now is the time, or when we talk about wastewater treatment, but it's related to the Fourth of July. So the side sewer project that our city is working on, we've sent out a large mailing for applications for low to moderate income people to take advantage of some grant money to get their side sewers replaced. And one of the suggestions that was made at our last meeting about this, they asked if I could possibly set up a booth at an event that's happening in the city to give information out to people and just talk to them, make them aware that it's happening. And so, is there room for that? If, okay.
There's room, yeah.
Okay. All right, then I guess we can discuss it more later.
No, yeah, we mentioned that, I was speaking with Jill about the prospects, and we figured we needed to clear it with the coordinator.
It's your street there, Ken.
So we're doing that in a public meeting. So I gather that's a tacit approval.
Oh, I think, is there anything wrong with sitting in front of the post office? And I mean, there's only nine million people come to the post office every day, is there?
No.
I mean, do you need someone to communicate with the public?
As long as it doesn't interfere with the spirit of the event.
Right. It would just be an informational thing. We're just trying to get people aware and get them to open those envelopes that come with the city's letterhead on it, so that they realize that there's something to help them, you know?
Have they gone out yet?
They went out yesterday.
Oh, okay.
That was part of the agenda. We're going to break that.
Well, it just got dropped yesterday afternoon, so.
Okay. Give it some thought, and we can always modify or adapt as you deem appropriate. Well, with that, and other public comments?
That's it.
We will proceed with our unfinished, yes?
I have one comment. I would request the mayor and the city council for me to be excused at the next city council meeting unless you wish to participate in the council meeting at the Swedish hostel. Thank you.
A traveling council meeting. That would be a long.
You might be a little out of it.
So they groom.
Yeah, it's been a big room, and when you get a shot. Hopefully you will be okay.
I hope I'll be a bit. That's what he told me today.
Okay.
My surgery is on the night, but he said I'll probably be there for two days, he says normally. They keep him in the hospital for two days.
Okay. Well, thank you for the notice, and we'll remember you.
I just wanted to give you an opportunity.
Thank you. Well, all right, with that, let's proceed forward with our unfinished business. Item number one was, I placed it on there just so that you continue to give thought to the pie chart that we said that we would provide to you, which I know we didn't get to at our last council meeting. And I see that Jill has some.
I have copies, but they're really dark, and I hope you can still read them. I'm sorry. Actually, you have a colored one.
Yeah.
The last time. Usually, the last time it's.
This is unusual for me. I kept it.
Yeah, me too. And I'm not suggesting that it's on the agenda that you need to provide any action.
Well, they tabled the agenda item, so they do need to address whatever they were going to address at the last meeting.
Sure, follow-up, I guess, if I'm saying, but I wasn't intended to initiate a fiery debate on how to expend money. Perhaps as part of that, I can report that I've, I don't remember, the council is aware of the particulars relating to the land acquisition and some of the legal entanglements that have arisen.
It's coming up. Is it? Isn't it on?
It is.
Or maybe we were going to, oh, maybe that's what we were going to discuss it on.
No, I don't think it's official item of business.
You're right. I think it was under this topic that we were going to discuss that.
Exactly. Let me be brief here. You'll recall that the council has given positive feedback to the two potential land acquisition items involving property south of the jail and the property on which the post office sits. We subsequently learned when we broached the subject with our city attorney that it's all well and good, and cities can certainly engage in property and land acquisition. However, cities need to set the stage before you can actually do that, and you have to set the stage by ensuring that such acquisition is in your capital facilities plan. And if it's not, then you can't do it. And so, it's a mining monkey wrench, and it's a reflection of our lack of experience in these matters. My enthusiasm, I think, prompted me to put the cart before the horse, so to speak, and I guess you can accept that as an excuse of sorts. It could be embarrassing, but as I've said so many times, you get what you pay for, and no crime, no foul has occurred, but we need to amend the capital facilities plan before we can engage in this.
So let's do that.
I figured that you would want to proceed with that, and so we asked her, well, how long does it take and how hard is it? And she says, well, it's not that difficult, but it will take at least three weeks, and you need to have a public hearing at the conclusion of it or in the process of it. So that's what's going to, you're going to be seeing happening, okay? If you so choose. It's not going to be my call, it would be the council's call. Oh, and I did, of course, speak with one of the individuals, one involved with the post office property, and because he'd set some July 31 deadline. And when he learned of the situation, he immediately understood and indicated he was willing to be patient, so there's no gun to his head or anybody's head on it. And so, and he would stand by the particulars of it, and he would even come to a public hearing to explain the justification for the costs that he's associated with that, like the interest rate and such. So that's, and I have not, I don't think, I mentioned it to Pastor Durham, but I didn't get into great detail, because it was just a meeting in passing. Have you heard any feedback, Mr. Flynn?
He just said that it's, we have to wait for governmental run tape.
He captured the essence of it.
There's no real pressure from our side, or from the church's side at all, and they would like, they still want to do it. So, but I, you know, my position with that church aside, I still think we ought to proceed and get the facilities plan done, so then we're not, we don't have that choker on us all the time if we decide to do something.
Absolutely. Okay, then with your sanction, we'll encourage Carol Morris to go ahead, whether her or Jennifer Robertson, to proceed to provide the appropriate paperwork to set that process in motion.
Do you need a vote on that?
Probably not.
I don't think we need to vote on it at this point, because basically, we'll draft it and propose it to council, and then council at that point will make the draft. But generally, a capital facilities plan is done on a yearly basis, is updated on a yearly basis. I plan on getting some information together from the Municipal Research Services, MRSC. They have an explanation of kind of all, we have a comprehensive plan, a capital facilities plan, wastewater utilities plan, you know, we have all these that all work together, what they all do, so I thought I would try to get that information together, as well as the steps that we're going to go through to update it and just put that in your boxes once I get it kind of all consolidated. Try to make it short and clear so that you understand what we're doing. I'm learning too what we're doing, but.
You're going to discover, as we engage in this process, that there's a lot of cities with paid staffs who are on top of the game and are aware of the nuances of such things. You'll discover that we probably are a little behind the eight ball on these, because they need to be updated, and it's one of those areas that we have plenty of room for improvement. So that's what she's just saying.
Just put on another hat.
So with that having been said.
But we have professional guidance that we can rely on.
Right, now we've got, and so we're responding to it. But inasmuch as it impacts the budget pie, you see the categories, and I for one feel comfortable with the council's perspectives on it, with the allocations of it. And so, we'll just stop talking and would sit back and invite the council to continue to exercise the judgment of wisdom that I know you have on its expenditure. I will insert, however, as I keep talking, that we are, we have now identified an engineer who we will bring on board, who will be able to provide us on occasion when the need arises, and the need is arising, which you will discern. I think that you'll, in your presentation, make mention that, we need an individual who is licensed and certified and knowledgeable and supportive and sensitive to the needs of the city on occasion to provide estimates for projects. And his compensation, of course, is a very existence because of this pie, I would say, in part. So, okay, we have identified that individual, and we will proceed to bring him on board officially. I don't think, we are prepared to.
The contract is in progress for improvement.
It's in our, okay.
Later on, we'll be discussing it then.
Let's see, which one was that?
New business.
Oh, right, number one. Okay, see, if I review the agenda before the meeting, which I will start doing. Okay, that's it. So if there's no action on the part of council, we could move forward with it.
Let's move forward.
Move forward, okay. Next item is wastewater topics. Subitem A, wastewater treatment plant operator hiring. Last council meeting, you heard our tale of woe, difficulties, lack of applications, people saying they would send but not doing it. Well, we finally did get an individual who submitted an official application. It was exciting to have gotten it. We're in the processes of processing it. You know who she is. It's Teresa Yost, the Public Works Director for the City of PL, who initially was interested as an employee of the city working under the sanction of the City of PL. It became excessively complicated, so she backed out and we decided to start over, but when she saw the terms of the present advertisement, she thought that it was an ideal scenario for her. So I'm very pleased, and she comes highly recommended. She's meticulous, fastidious, and professional, based on those who know professionalism in that arena. So if we don't get anybody else by our next meeting, I'm hoping that we can move forward.
Well, the application period that we set has closed, but we did have one person sneak under the door at the last minute, and it's not anyone we know, so.
No kidding.
But they didn't, they included a resume but not an application, so I sent them the application to fill out and get that back to us.
All right, last minute.
Yeah, so we have a second one as well.
Isn't that lady, she was here for one meeting, wasn't she? When we went through this initial thing quite a while ago? Wasn't she here?
I've never met her.
No, that was somebody else.
Unless I missed that meeting.
You might have been thinking of her, Ben Hansen.
The individual from Mount Alaska, who's indicated several times, the application is forthcoming, but it never does, so we've kind of written that off.
Oh, and a side note, I think we ought to, what was the guy's name that used to be here?
Dennis Montgomery.
Montgomery?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just found out he's diagnosed stage IV cancer, not going to make it.
Yes. Yeah, we were aware of that. Yes, we were aware of that and that's a tragedy and we'll be in our thoughts and prayers, no doubt.
Cancer of the brain.
Yes. So now we'll go to item two B, or not two B, that is the quote, but CDB's side sewer project. Jill tipped you off on the fact that we did a celebration yesterday, on Wednesday, we slid the survey of forms out under the deadline on Wednesday, well, not Wednesday, right?
Well, that was our goal, yeah.
Yeah, and so they're out and we're about to arrive at every single residential waste treatment user. And I can tell you from, we had several meetings that you weren't involved with, fortuitously for you, but a lot of time and effort on the part of a number of individuals from Gibson Olson and Kathy Reed and Jill, myself, and anybody else who was there, went into the preparation of those forms because we're trying to break the mold and see if we can do better than average on the responsiveness of the residents, particularly those who are in the income strata where they can benefit by getting free money to replace their side sewers. So the experiment is on. If we have a booth at the Fourth of July, we're hoping that it might facilitate the success. Did you have a comment?
Actually, how many applicants are available? I mean, how many people will be qualified? Do we get, do we get 175, do we get 280, do we get 360? At one point, I thought it was like only 175.
This is low to moderate income only. You have to qualify for low to moderate income first based on the CDBG, Department of Commerce's regulation of low to moderate income. And you'll get that in your packet, it'll have a scale, but they estimated that in our community, there would probably be about 60, I think was the number, there was 60.
Something like that.
Yeah, in that range. People who would actually qualify, but they don't expect that everyone will be willing to provide the documentation that's needed to get the funds, so.
So then what happens to all the rest of us?
Those who have to have it replaced, if the house is, had it, it was built within the last 20 years, you don't have to fix your side sewer.
Your house, that shouldn't have to worry about.
You shouldn't have to worry.
1971.
But I thought you built.
Well, she owns more than one property.
I have more than one with those happy little lines going.
Can I make some clarification? Because this was one concern that we hadn't put a lot of information out yet, was what happens to the rest of us that don't qualify for that? And they, Kathy Reed from Department of Commerce, as well as Paula Coviello from Gibson Olson, they didn't want to send out too much information about that yet because they didn't want people to think, oh, well, I'll have another opportunity to get the money later, so I won't worry about this one. So they're kind of, kind of left that information out a little bit on purpose, but also because we don't know exactly. There are several opportunities, there are additional grant opportunities that we may be able to get for different resident, different qualifying residents. There's also loan opportunities that the city could get possibly if we qualify. But see, these are all up in the air. The money that we have in our pocket right now will only qualify for low to moderate income. We want to take care as many of those as we possibly can without money so that we don't have to come up with a big loan or, or something for the remainder of it. She says there will be other options. We haven't looked into which options might work for us yet. We're just trying to get through this little window first. But there are also opportunities for people to, if they feel that theirs isn't leaking, that they can show that it's not leaking, we'll have the opportunity for that too.
Camera system or something?
Yeah, they'll smoke test. Basically what they said is we'll smoke, it's in the ordinance, the side sewer ordinance that the council passed, but basically that the city would provide a smoke test and if you pass the smoke test, the city would pay for the smoke test. If you don't pass the smoke test, you would pay for the smoke test and the repair of your property. So that's kind of.
And I suppose it'll all come down later, but can you, obviously, like me, we would go out and dig our own up.
Mm-hmm.
Will that be available?
Yes.
That'll all come out in later information if you have that capability or whatever.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you for that.
There will be permitting through the city so that our owner can make sure everything's done right, you know, all of that.
Certainly.
But yes.
This is all going to be carefully coordinated by Paula Coviello. She's a project manager of sorts. And so questions like yours can be directly submitted to her.
But it's important, I'm sorry, it's important to remember that homeowners that have renters, it's whoever's living in the property, it's their income that qualifies them. So if you have a renter, it's a low to moderate income, so.
For the renter that's a low to moderate.
If you are the renter, you can, if you are low.
You just picked up a couple of freebies.
And there is, you'll see in the paperwork that there is a requirement that your rent stay low to moderate income level rent for a certain amount of time after you get this money. So that, all that information is.
So in my scenario, how did you mail those out? Did those all leak to me?
Everything's going to the homeowner. Everything's going to the homeowner and we're telling the owners, if you have a renter, here's the paperwork for the renter, you get it to your renter and your renter needs to get it. And we are having three workshops in July, two hours each, five to seven. It'll, one will be on a Tuesday, one will be on a Wednesday, and one will be on a Thursday. And basically, the two ladies I told you, Kathy Reed, Paula Coviello, possibly also Mike Marshall from Gibson Olson, myself, possibly Diane, will be here to help people fill out the applications, get the proper paperwork copies. There's some that require notary. I'm a notary, so we'll provide free notary. We're going to try to make it as easy as possible. The big thing is get the word out, they have people get their applications in right away. And if you need help, please call, we want to get as many people taken care of.
Yes.
Also, there's a notary down at the store. She's a notary too.
Is she free?
I don't know about that.
It will be free at the workshops for this particular event because it is a city project, so we can provide that for free.
Excellent. So this is actually a very big deal.
It is.
We're setting in motion something that will make a dramatic difference in our long-term, but you're all aware of that. Any questions, concerns about that agenda topic? If not, then we'll suggest we proceed. Counsel to consider ordinance 2014-13, the junk vehicle ordinance. I'm unfortunate, yet again, I have the chance to read it.
I can give you an update.
Yeah.
The last meeting, some council members, the council members that were here expressed some concerns and wanted some clarifying language as well as the mayor's concern with having it written as the city clerk being the enforcement person. And so it was suggested that council do the, make a resolution for each situation and that they would approve it. And we ran that by the attorney and she just said, whoa, 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 no, 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 you do not want your council being responsible for making those decisions. She said, number one, this is a type of thing that's easily, easily goes to court, people will sue over it and you don't want to open the city council up to that, as well as, she said, it's political suicide. She says, most council members don't want to be involved with those small detail type things, so it doesn't appear that the council members, elected officials are singling anyone out. She says, you want someone on an administrative level to do that. So the mayor and I talked about and we said, well, there's two of us that are administrators. And so the mayor said, well, if I have to do it, I have to do it. So that's the way we had it changed.
But it said, it said in there that you're not the enforcement officer, you're just the decision maker.
Oh, the, okay, I'm sorry.
But before, before it was an enforcement.
Right.
And we said, no, you shouldn't be doing the enforcement. I noticed they changed that, you're the decision maker, but somebody else does the enforcement.
Well, it should say now the mayor is the, the new version has the mayor, you'll see it's highlighted all throughout. The other thing that was brought up that council requested was that we add some additional criteria to what a junk vehicle is. And you'll see on page three, right at the top there, she added items five and item six, expired tabs and illegally parked in the rear or front yard, in the front or side yard setbacks. So those were the additional criteria she thought might, might work for this situation since there was a request for additional. So those are the two changes you see from the last time you saw this, two weeks ago.
So, no, as Jill mentioned, I am comfortable, well, not comfortable, but I will embrace the newfound role that would be mine as the official enforcement officer or administrator in the community. Because I don't really anticipate deluge of activities and I think for the most part, when we do engage in an action, it's, it's so obvious that there's very little, in past experiences on this situation, I think, why I mentioned last time, one effort, previous effort, where I think we eliminated about 16 junker vehicles that were growing weeds throughout the community. Don't think it would be much different.
Well, once the weeds are above the vehicle, then our nuisance, our vegetation.
Well, we get a two for one.
And then we cut the weeds down in the vehicle, you go see the vehicle.
January, February.
Yeah, the ordinances go hand in hand.
So I'm not supportive of this, the needs of home life.
It refers to the mayor or designee, and I know, who is, who would the other designee, who might that be? If there was ever a need for one?
Whoever, whomever he pointed to.
Probably that person most proximate to my right. No, that's something we would certainly.
I'm just wondering, I'm not.
I would probably opt for the city clerk.
Well, in an ideal situation, it would be our chief police, probably.
Yes.
But we don't have that option right now, so they do, they leave the wording this way in case there's a time that our, we don't have a mayor for some emergency reason or something.
Law enforcement is a topic that is looming on the horizon, but we won't bring that up this agenda.
Well, there are some of our city ordinances that the sheriff's department is comfortable helping us to enforce because it's the same as the county regulation. And this may be one of them. I haven't talked to them, I don't know. But I don't think that that would be a big stretch for them to help us if we needed to do citations or something like that.
Okay.
So are we ready to move on this? How they put a motion forward then? I moved adopt organs 2014-13 relating to removal of junk vehicles from private property, declaring junk vehicles to be nuisance and unlawful, defining junk vehicles as describing the procedure for issuance of notices of violation of the property owner and owner of the vehicle, hearing, abatement, imposition of civil penalties, and collection of penalties.
Mr. Flynn has submitted the motion as stated. Do we have a second for Mr. Flynn's motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I think I'm a bit too shy. Now's your opportunity to provide additional concern, commentary. Referring none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Congratulations. I'm step closer to cleaning up the community. So now I suggest we move forward quickly with an update on our Transportation Improvement Board. And I would be remiss if I didn't provide in this public forum, from my personal perspectives, admiration and appreciation to Mr. Joe Chai, who has taken to the fun in his broad shoulders to exercise attention and energy on that important topic, which is the number one priority for the residents of Beta, and that's the improvement of our city streets. So with that preamble, I would turn the time over to Joe to let you know of what happened this past week.
So if you remember, a couple of months ago, the council gave me the go-ahead to attend a Transportation Improvement Board workshop that happened in Vancouver last, or two weeks ago. At that workshop, I learned about the program and met with the engineer that oversees Southwest and Western Washington, Clint Ritter. This program, the Transportation Improvement Board, they are funded through state funds such as the gas tax and whatnot. And they are a unique government agency in that they give away money instead of taking money. So they have a great job and he was more than willing to come down last week and meet with us. So we sat down here, we met with Clint and the mayor was there as well, Jill was there partway. And we walked around town and he looked at some of our city streets. There are three programs that they offer for small cities. There's the arterial program, the sidewalk program, and the preservation program. The preservation program is really what we would be most interested in usually. It involves chip sealing and top coating asphalt on pretty much all of our city streets is what would qualify for that. So they would come in and they would just redo certain city streets, we'd apply for a grant for that. Unfortunately, this year, they're not offering this program. They didn't have enough funding and so they're not offering it. The second program that they offer is the arterial program, and it's for major rebuilds of high traffic, high traffic areas, things that are, that are public in nature, public facilities, destinations, so schools, government buildings, that kind of thing. So major arterials. So they do have money for that this year. He looked at our arterials and our arterials, we have three small sections. We have the section of A Street from Highway 603, past the post office, and then in front of Warden Park. There's a small section of West Side Highway where Eighth Street connects, and it's in great shape, the county takes care of it, so that wouldn't qualify for any funds. And the third section is from Highway 506 down to Eighth Street, from B down, from 506 on B Street, and then taking the intersection in front of City Hall onto Eighth. So those are the sections as well. And he looked at all those and those really are not in condition to where he would think they would warrant transportation arterial funding right now. They are not in major disrepair, they are not in needing of getting ripped up and completely rebuilt. So he thought that applying for any type of program under the arterial, money under the arterial program just wouldn't probably worth our while this year. But the third part of that is the sidewalk program. And he was taking a look at the section of A Street from, on the post office block there. Now that has sidewalk, but if you cross over Sixth Street and towards Warden Park, there is no sidewalk there yet in front of the jail and in front of the park. So he thought that would be an excellent candidate for a sidewalk grant, to have sidewalk built there. So it would continue the post office block across Sixth and then down to Warden Park. So if we wanted to, we could apply for a grant for populations under 1,000, we wouldn't have to provide any matching funds. The grant process is a point-based system, so for every 1% of the projected cost, we get one extra point towards, towards our grant application process.
You can classify every 1% that the city chooses to put in.
Right, right.
Get another point in the grant.
Right, so it's a hundred-point system. If the project was $50,000, you know, we could put in up to, you know, we get 1%, for every 1% of that we put in, we would get an extra one point up to a maximum of five points. If we wanted to, but we don't have to. So anyway, he thought that would be a great. If we wanted to, but we don't have to. Um, so anyway, he thought that would be a great, um, project that they, that they could possibly, possibly cover. So if the, if the city thought that was a good idea, we could apply for a grant and I'd be, uh, willing to, to, to get that application put in. Part of that is to utilize a engineer that's certified in the state of Washington. He has to stamp projected construction costs. So we would utilize our new engineer for that. So, um, Clint Ritter, the engineer from the state of Washington, thought that, um, a lot of engineers would do that pro bono for the opportunity of if the grant actually went through, then they would be on the project and they would get paid during the project. That's up in the air right now, whether our new engineer would do that or not. So if you guys are interested, you can go forward with, uh, application.
Would you elaborate on, wait, it's not just a sidewalk, is it? They would expect the engineer. Tell them what else would go with the sidewalk.
Well, you can apply, you can add other things besides the sidewalk. You can add, apply, um, for bent, for sit seating if you wanted to have benches, um, for lighting to properly light the area. Um, you could apply, you could have lighting part as part of the sidewalk project. Um, they would redo a little bit of the end of the A Street at the end of the park block. So that when you cross over that current, uh, the current ramp that comes off of the sidewalk really isn't meeting state standards for, um, uh, disabilities access. So they would redo that section as well and then begin the new section across the, the street. So. But the full, the we would still need to sit down and make a plan. So it's still kind of preliminary in what we want to do. So we just need a little bit of decision on whether we actually want to apply for a grant and, and start the process of getting an engineer involved.
The thing you could conceive would be done this year.
Right, so the applications are due the end of August and the, the, the funding would be funded next year. So we would know in November if we got, we got the funding. Yeah, and then, and then they would actually do the construction in twenty fifteen.
I think if the city was going, if I understand correctly, if the city was going to put some money towards it, um, it would have to be in our capital facilities plan as a project that we're working on.
Well, it was only a point and it was only up to five points. So that's about five thousand dollars.
Depends on how much the project cost is.
I would say that, uh, we ought to go after it and see what we can get.
But we would find out relatively shortly. For, like I said, the applications are due by the end of August. So we would need to get moving on this and then we would know pretty quickly, um, the estimated, estimated project cost of this. So free or nearly free sidewalks.
I mean, you get sidewalks and additional lighting down around the park.
Yeah.
Yeah, free sidewalks.
Well, it also includes some lights around that park also.
It would.
Lighting, yes.
Yes, it could depending on, on the scope of the project that whatever we decide to do.
Yeah. Oh, did you mention his line of red?
All right, so it sounds like that's a yes and we can keep going on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's the first part of it. Now the second part, they have, like I mentioned, the, the three sections of the city streets that are arterial, um, that are classified as arterial. He took a look at those and the section, you can see there on the sheet that I have a, a red, a red no X around that section of B. His suggestion was to move that set, move that over to the left onto the, to A. So he would re, we would reclassify A as arterial. So the arterial would come all the way down A and then turn onto Eighth in front of the, in front of the city hall.
That makes sense.
We already have it signed at, for city hall. Um, and it's also a more appropriate, uh, major access. It has a, a wider intersection. The street's wider. And he thought that that in the future, we could apply for a grant to redo that section of A once it was reclassified. Uh, they would get rid of the ditches and redo the sidewalks that are, that are crumbling right there. So if we wanted to reclassify that, all it is, is it's an email to his manager and they would reclassify that. So.
I'd give a yes on that also. I think we can, yes. Cause where you have it right, where the art, where your, one section you marked no, that's more of a, it's not an artery, it's more of a residential street.
Yeah, and that street it goes, it's up and down. It's, it's narrow. You couldn't really expand it to include lots of sidewalks.
And the other one also is wider and is, also comes right off the post office and it just makes a lot of sense.
All right, and then see that other, the other section.
And then the kids go drag racing. They'll have a straight shot all that goes five or six to Warden Park and that's about a quarter of a mile.
So and, and as a freebie, that next section, that other section of orange in front of the fire station there on, on B, it's currently not classified as arterial. He said that if we just sent an email, they would just classify it as arterial. Um, because the fire trucks do go in and out on that street and, uh, they, as the mayor, uh, said during the meeting, they torque their tires on that and they tear up that section of the street. And so he would, they, we could get that reclassified as arterial, then it would qualify for more funding if we wanted to.
That's a no brainer also.
We wouldn't lose anything for doing that.
You, you see what that street is like. It looks like a minefield. So.
Yeah, I would say by all means.
Like fire trucks and everything in the Amazon on B Street is much more safer for them to come out of the fire hall and, and right to five oh six.
But that wouldn't make that section of B Street, uh, still an arterial. Uh, A Street would be the new arterial.
And B would, would be reclassified as, that section B would be reclassified as local access and it would still, um, qualify for all the preservation programs. So, okay, sounds, sounds good. So we'll do that and we'll just get those reclassified then or start the process on it. And then, um, we'll also proceed with the sidewalk project.
Super.
Excellent. Thanks, thanks for that.
Yep, you is, Judy, you're gonna wind up getting sidewalks in front of your house. You're gonna get sidewalks in front of your house.
It can be modified, I'm sure, for comedy. Anything we can do to eliminate those barrel pits, um, in my mind is, uh, an improvement to our community. Anyway, so thank you for that. Let's, um, quickly move on. Uh, next item is council review of marijuana topics. I, um, I need to remind the council that, um, the city clerk and I have been, um, studying the calendar and, and we're well aware that we're five months into our six month ban. And so, uh, we felt like we needed to place this item on the agenda so that the council members are sensitive to what needs to be happening as that end date, uh, arises. And so to that end, we've tasked our, uh, our city attorney to give us, um, an update of maybe a timeline of things that we need to be doing. And it's a good thing we did that because if we didn't, then we would be caught once again, um, holding, uh, an empty bag. Well, I did my seat.
I was thinking the same thing.
I, uh, remember when the Hancock owned the property and if I am not mistaken, they lost the water rights to Olega Creek, the same as I did on my own farm when I got divorced because the wife did not use the water out of what's called Murphy's Creek. And so, nobody can get water rights anymore. And that's what I understood that they were from the water on Olega Creek now. That's what someone told me. But I didn't, that's kind of an illegal thing because from what I understand is that they have lost their water rights way back in the nineteen seventies, eight seventies or so forth.
You're talking about the, the absolute German. Don't have water rights to Olega. Yes, I, I, I would agree with that. It's my understanding that. But that's relevant in actuality to what I'm about to say, uh, is because we've received, um, yesterday, uh, the response from Carol Morris. And rather than, um, make the contents of it a matter of the public meeting, I just would like to, um, inform the council members that we will, um, give a copy of the deejay council members before they, you leave tonight, so that, uh, you can see what, um, steps need to be taken. One of those is that we need to get our planning commission, um, functioning, which we're in the process of doing with Rob Morris. He's going to come down and have an initial meeting. And the planning, um, commission will, um, decide to, recommendation, uh, to the city council. And then a public notice has to happen for a public hearing. And, uh, we have time for that to take place. So, um, that's the report.
A public hearing will take place with the planning commission and then they will make a recommendation to council at that point.
Yes. And so we're kind of inserting the planning commission as part of the six month process. So that's about the essence of it.
Can I explain about the possible extension? If, if we, if we find that we aren't able to get all this done within the next thirty days, that there may be, um, an extension of the ban, like a two month or three month extension, just allow us time to finish this.
Yeah, that would be.
I think that's, that's very all well and good, but I think we ought to try and push this, like, and get it done because every city that has been sued, there's been cities that have kept pushing their ban out, pushing their ban out and not making their mind up. And then the people sue and say, well, make up your mind. What are you gonna do? Yes or no? And I think we've made up our minds. Everything we see and the longer we study it, the worse it looks.
Well, some of it will depend on the response from the citizens. And if there's certain, if there's, um, objections or something, then we have to add on additional processes that may make it extend beyond the, of thirty days that we have if we don't deal with those objections and if that, if I understand it correctly, that that's what it's saying, so.
Have they ever had their water turned on by Lewis County? But I was told, I was told, I guess the rumor that Lewis County would only give them a one inch line. How can the irrigate within one inch line?
Yeah, no, they, that's still being tested. Uh, we can only speculate as to what their next legal course of action is going to be. But, um, uh, there are a number of events that are, are forthcoming. There was a, um, supposed to have been a five thirty. Wasn't a workshop.
Shoreline. Shoreline management.
Management, Mr. Chai came up to, but it had been canceled because of, uh, a, a calendaring snafu. But, um, I can tell you what they're gonna hear. Well, I'm not gonna make a public comment on it. It would be inappropriate, but, uh, the public should come to that meeting. Uh, and it's gonna relate to what you're discussing. And, um, so with that, uh, I think I would prefer that you read this and then be prepared in our next meeting to, uh, be, take some aggressive action. So, uh, once we get the planning commission staffed, sworn in, uh, finally, and Rob Morris, uh, present and in charge. So with that, uh, I know it sounds rather vague, but, um, the contents of this that I think represent considerable sensitivity given the topic. So we have a comment from the public, um, with the council.
Yes.
He's only three years old, it's cool. I just wanna know, game, are we gonna, are we gonna accept Brandon and nurture his business when he gets that German auto up and running?
Sure, I have no problem with that whatsoever.
I personally wanted to know that.
I've told that to him directly.
Okay, that, that's just something I needed to know, cause obviously my company is involved with Brandon and getting that German auto running. And I've been going and, and all of this other has obviously created walls between everybody. And, and I, I just wanna know, are we gonna nurture that as a business in our community once he gets that actual?
He's gonna have to follow the restrictions that all businesses would have to follow in this community. And if he accepts that, that's fine. I, I want to see his business go. I used to work with businesses like that all the time. I have no problem with that. There are other issues I do have issues with, but.
He has been embraced and the city has expended hundreds of hours and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of precious, uh, effort and revenue towards the establishment of that business. So, uh, if anybody alleges otherwise, then they're disregarding the past eight years of history in the city of Vader. It would be a very compelling case if somebody tried to approve that the city was not supportive of Mr. Milton's absolute German.
Well, I, I wasn't implying that. I was just curious if.
I've heard questions like that.
Oh, have you? I have, I hadn't heard anybody say anything and so I was just curious if he gets, cause I know he's in the process of, putting an office together and, you know, getting the German auto part up and running. And so that was what I was just questioning, you know?
No, yeah, we, oh, hey, it's to the economic and, um, commercial advantage of the city of Vader. We all yearn for. But so, but with that, uh, given the lateness of the hour, um, I'd recommend if the council doesn't oppose this, that we move along rapidly to our next item.
No problem.
Under new business, item one, the council to consider city engineer selection, budget and contract. As set forth in resolution zero six dash twenty fourteen. Now you have that, that it's, um, the document, um, with the title consultant services contract between the city of Vader and Jerome W. Morris Set and Associates. And so, uh, I would hope and recommend that the council, uh, consider affirmatively the contents of that document as relates to resolution number zero six point fourteen.
So this will be the engineer we would use for all of the different ordinances we're passing. So for instance, the, um, excavation permits that people would require. You know, the, the permit applicant, applicant would pay the city, like whatever our fee schedule was and that money would go towards paying for the engineering services. So the engineer would build a city, we would use the permit money to pay for the engineer.
Minimum budget.
That's, that's the way it's supposed to work.
Right.
However.
However, things like the grant that you're talking about, um, if they didn't do a pro bono, that would be the city's money. So a few other things that the city needs to do on a regular basis for upkeep as far as like capital, capital facilities plan update that we're talking about doing. Part of that is we have to update our transport, six year transportation plan. And that requires an engineer's, um, he has to be involved in there partially to give us costs for the plan that we put together and, and all that. So there are some city business items that will require, um, city funds that aren't covered by permits. So that's what you will see, um, in the contract as well as in the resolution as trying to set amounts. In talking with both the attorney and our city planner, Rob White, about how do we estimate what amount to put in for the year? Um, it was suggested that because we don't know exactly how much time and, and what things, um, the city is going to need the attorney or the engineer for at this exact point, it's hard to pinpoint that. So she said what you could do is set kind of a low threshold of what you think might be reasonable and then, um, just require that to go over that amount, if, if, to go in excess of that amount, it would just have to come back before council and get your approval again if we, you know, if there was something that came up that needed funds expended beyond this low threshold that we set for the year. So I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe each year in the budget, we would determine the amount that would be set for the engineer. And then if we were to meet that threshold and needed to go over for some reason, it would come before council.
So this would not affect this budget this year. It would start our new budget.
Well, this would, this contract would initially be for the remaining two thousand fourteen. And then when we do the two thousand fifteen budget, then the amount.
So when we do two thousand fifteen budget, if we approve this tonight and we get him on board, then we're gonna get a real feel of what he's gonna cost for usage and requirements. So that. So that can then be used for determination for our future budget.
Yeah.
Well, on the back, he's got an hourly rate.
Right.
I can tell you, we had similar services when I first was mayor. And that was with Ray Oswer. And it was on as needed basis. And I think the books would show that after a year, we'd generally have expended about five thousand dollars for services as have been described. But that was then, this is now. So we have a lot more going on.
Yeah. But if I was, if anybody asked me my opinion, I would probably suggest that dollar amount as well, just as a base, just to get us started. And then if we find that we need him a lot more than that, then again, it would come back to council.
But I can also tell you that there was not a relationship, as you described, where if he did a service for which a fee would be applied, that monies would go to cover his, that didn't exist. So this is, in my opinion, is an improvement. And just as, if it helps you make a decision, this company was highly recommended as well. Their response sensitive to the needs of small communities have convinced me that they're very proactive and want to do what they can for a small community like ours. And of course, Carol Morris also extols their virtues. So for me, that's a pretty strong.
And one of the things that Rob White said about this company, his experience working with these people, is that they have done tremendous things getting, helping to get street grants.
Yes.
Street repairs, street grants. He said, I know the city really needs that, and so he said, these people will probably be really good for.
It gives you some insight as to why, I hope the council will be supportive of this.
I'm ready to vote on it.
Let's motion.
I'll put a motion, and we, okay, I have to read it, that's right.
I can do it too.
Huh?
That's wonderful.
An amount has to be set though as well, and I see it doesn't say that in the motion.
Spell out maximum contract price, or do you want to spell out a monthly maximum?
Oh, does it say that?
Right on the front page.
It's highlighted in the.
Front page.
Front page.
Page one.
Oh, that one, yes. But I'm just saying, in the motion that she provided on the agenda bill there, it doesn't say the amount there.
No.
So we need to decide, you need to have council decide an amount, and then do the motion to approve the resolution with that amount. You know what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
It does, but I'm looking at the motion bill you talked about. There's two, I should have that.
You do, it's probably the same. It's not saving on. Are you loading?
Oh, there it is. Okay, I got it. Well, let's use the term like you said, let's use establish a maximum contract price of five thousand dollars. That gets us started. And we're talking at least halfway in the year, so that should be enough to at least cover the year. And when we find out what's happening, we can reevaluate that come budget time, which is coming up in a couple of months. So why not use the five thousand we had in there before? Well, that's a starting point.
Would establish permit fees, would those come out of that five thousand-dollar budget? We'd have to.
I don't know how that works.
That would not come out of the five thousand.
I don't think, I would think that it's not, but I would have to double check this to make sure, because that would, it would make sense to me that the permits that pay for that service, I would think that that would.
Just to be city expenditures that aren't reimbursed.
This would be almost like the attorney working for us, and then the engineer works for us, and it would bill us that hourly rate. So we have, in determining the contract price, we also have to establish a maximum contract price, prove resolution contract with res, establish maximum contract price approved. Says the same thing twice. We'd have to, is there some mention of it for an hourly rate?
Oh, he has a list of services.
So, oh, here it is. No, it's on the front, spell out monthly maximum. We have to come up with a contract price and a monthly maximum.
I'm figuring out, it's looking like about eight hundred and thirty or eight hundred and fifty dollars if we took that five thousand divided by six months.
No, I, yeah, why not?
Yeah, it'd be eight hundred and thirty-three dollars if you wanted to set it that way. Or if you, I guess it's just a maximum amount that could be billed in one month without coming to council for approval. You could say five thousand dollars in a month.
I think the start, for us to get started, I think that's reasonable, because we're going to spend more upfront than we are once it gets rolling. The first couple of months, we're going to get hit pretty hard.
Right.
So that makes sense to start. And then we'll reevaluate it in the budget for next year. Because I don't think we should carry that all next year, that's a high monthly guarantee, which basically it will turn out to be. So let's leave it at the five thousand and the eight hundred and some dollars a month maximum. And that's just for the remainder of this contract year.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
For six months?
Yeah. For six months. Because our fiscal year ends December thirty-first. And when we see how this all starts to work for us, then we can take a look at what we have to do to plan for budgetary purposes for next year.
Oh, yeah.
And we're going to spend our maximum amount of money per month to get started, because everything's so behind.
Yeah.
And so that's where we'll spend the most, and then it should taper off. So it should work, we should be able to change, maybe not the contract price, but we will be able to change the monthly billing price for the budget next year. So that's how we, that's how I would look at it.
And this will be five thousand above reimbursed permitting costs?
Correct.
That's the way I understand it.
Did a motion emerge?
Okay. City council may establish, okay, a motion, I move to approve resolution oh-six-two-zero-one-four authorized, I authorizing the mayor to award the on-call engineering service agreement to Jerome W., is it Morrisetti?
Morrisette.
Morrisette and Associates Incorporated P.S. And authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement substantially in the form attached to the resolution. Also, I would like to include that we put down a maximum contract price of five thousand dollars and a maximum monthly price of approximately eight hundred and thirty-three dollars.
For the year two thousand?
For the year two thousand fourteen, correct.
Okay. You've heard the motion submitted before the council by Mr. Flynn to approve the resolution as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a second by Mr. Wilson. Additional comments, concerns, observations? Hearing then, let's put the matter to a roof. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Motion is carried. Another red letter accomplishment presented. Okay, we're almost done here. Next item under new business is council to consider ordinance two thousand fourteen dash fourteen, the infamous uniform code for the abatement of dangerous buildings. elongated, since building ordinance. And so I know that you have in your packets a document relating to that. And so I did avail myself of the opportunity of the minutes before to read this ordinance, which we just received. And it's not my place to initiate such discussions by providing mayoral commentary. But since I would have such a keen, significant role in its implementation, and worked so many years, and with committee members who were so eager to get something done, I have concerns about the context of this as it's currently written. This is obviously a draft, if you've had a chance to, there's more of the content lined out than is actually.
Yeah, the cross-out potential was crazy.
Yeah. And so I personally am not prepared to provide a mayoral, or you don't need a mayoral. If you want to know what I'm thinking at this very moment in time, I think we need to study it. I personally would like to provide some clarifying commentary to it.
I was researching this, and this, this uniform code, this is, I found this online, and a lot of cities have adopted this. I mean, Fight uses this, St. Helens Oregon uses this. I mean, this, the list goes on and on. The whole country pretty much uses this same, same thing from what I can tell. But if we have issues with the part that our attorney has crossed out.
I can report that at least one other council member has asked permission to contact city attorney with some, what I think are relevant questions and concerns about it relating to potential rampant abuse by authorities relating to property owners within the city. And so I have not been made aware of what you learned from contacting the city attorney, but I know that his input would be critical. Giving away the source of it, so I don't know.
If he has relevant information to make a decision, I think we ought to wait to hear it.
I agree.
I do, yeah.
One more, another two weeks isn't going to make, I mean, we worked on this for two years, as I know of.
Yeah. Okay, then, that's my hope, that the council would consider perhaps tabling the topic until our next council meeting.
If he's found some information, I'd like to hear it. Yep.
Okay, then with that, after you've updated that, we'll tabulate it until next meeting. Okay, thank you for that. Lastly, but not leastly, the, this was kind of a pro forma issue that we placed on the last minute. Council to reconsider resolution zero-seven twenty-fourteen relating to surplus office items. And I would defer to our city clerk to provide some clarifying commentary.
You'll see listed on the back of the resolution, the items, it's just a lot of software, that old outdated software that we don't use or need, or is even serviced by the providers anymore. Few pieces of old computer equipment that's not used, just standard house cleaning, it wasn't anything really significant in there. Couple monitors and a bunch of old software, basically. That's all, just cleaning house.
And perhaps insert, but there may be, you'll note that neither one of the police vehicles are on that, but I know it's kind of a stretch to insert that in this.
The white ones have already been circled.
I know, but I would like the council to be aware of what's happening.
Oh, what's happening with them? Oh, okay. So part of the agreement that council approved many, many months ago with our former reserve officer, Justin Stenick, who works as a reserve now for Castle Rock, he was interested, he heard we were surplusing some of our vehicles, and he was interested in, in the, one of the white ones, the two thousand three Crown Vic. And we, council approved through the mayor and everything, that he would do work on the one Crown Vic, the two thousand one Crown Vic, to get it ready for surplus sale. And he would also do the necessary adjustments to the interior of the Charger to turn it back into a regular patrol vehicle instead of a K-nine unit. And in exchange for the vehicle that Castle Rock was interested in. And like I said, council had, right, council had agreed to do that. And so we've been kind of waiting for a long time, and the Charger, they've had their own issues with vehicles and the timing of wanting to finish this. But they're ready to take the vehicle, the Crown Vic, but I told him, you have to get the Charger done first, you can't, you can't have the Crown Vic until the Charger's done. So Justin Stenick came out last weekend, picked up the vehicle, took it down to Castle Rock, took out the Charger, took it down to Castle Rock, and he and some other police officers worked on it over the weekend, got it, took all the dog stuff out, put the old seat back in. It looks good. The only thing that wasn't put on was the bars on one of the back windows, because it wasn't included in the supplies that we gave him. But Nev has since located it and has, I don't know if he's done it yet, but said just take a couple of screws and put it in, so that will be done. So Justin has.
And we have all the parts.
We have all the parts from it, yeah, we returned all the parts. And he, as far as we can tell, has done everything that we've asked him to do as part of the agreement that council approved many months ago. So we're ready to go ahead and proceed with.
Give him the car.
Give him the car, move the paperwork.
Sounds good.
If council's okay with that.
Yep.
That sounds good.
We're continuing to work with another officer.
Randy Pennington.
Randy Pennington from, he works with Toledo, been there for many years. He's, he's offered a possible heated garage situation that we might be able to put the Charger in for a while to get it out of the, out of the rain and out of the moisture and such. And so we're checking into that, and he's going to let us know.
I would inform the council, Randy Pennington is fire commissioner for the Windlock Toledo Fire District. And is a close friend and comes regularly to the May Day to provide police services at no cost to the city. So he's, he was observing the weather challenges of that vehicle, and personally volunteered to find a space in the fire storage facility that he's acquainted with. He's getting permission from the commission to allow us to house that vehicle. So I just want you to be made aware of that.
Sounds great.
We'd hope to know the next couple of weeks. So there, now, back to the official resolution, I would hope there'd be some expeditious council
To move to adopt resolution seven dash twenty-fourteen pertaining to the disposal of certain inventory items listed in exhibit A and deemed to be surplus to the city of Aiden.
Okay, Mr. Wilson has submitted motion to approve resolution zero-seven twenty-fourteen as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any additional commentary, concerns? Hearing then, propose on it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Excellent, this is carried, we'll proceed with that action. I see no other items on our agenda. Our council meeting will be decided, we're concluded at eight oh three P.M. Thank you for your action.